Call to order the May 19, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting. I would like to invite you to stand with me if you wish as we have an invocation. Father, we thank you for another wonderful day in Bowling Green and for the opportunities we have here in this community. Thank you for these people that work for this city, and we pray that you'll give them wisdom and guidance as we consider the items before us, and we pray for protection for those who are keeping us safe on the streets. Thank you, Lord, for all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I forgot what to move the flag back. We had the reception for the newly sworn-in Americans this past week, and they were taking photos up here. I apologize about that. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Just as a reminder, if you choose to tune us out and need to go vote, you've got an hour and a half before the polls close, so feel free to do so. Secondly, I had a couple of questions about the corsage I'm wearing or boutonniere, what do they call it? Boutonniere?
Boutonniere for men.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's a flower, so anyway, that's in honor of Kobe Aluminum Automotive Products, who celebrated their 10th anniversary today. Governor Beshear was in town to help them with that celebration, and they gave us that. I told them I would wear it tonight at the meeting. And then we have one other important thing to do. One of our important partners in this community that keeps our infrastructure in place and safe and just at tip-top condition, we want to acknowledge them in the proclamation for National Public Works Week. So if you'd permit me to read this. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work services and systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through 23, 2015, as National Public Works Week in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions in which our public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And I'll meet our public works director, Jeff Lashley, at the podium to present this to him.
I have a couple of comments, Mayor. That's okay. Jeff asked me to make an announcement on behalf of the department. As Mayor knows, and a number of you know, on May 1, 2015, our Public Works Department was re-accredited by the American Public Works Association. Why this is significant is that we're the only public works agency in the state of Kentucky that's accredited. I think one of the few in America that has a police, fire, and public works accredited, which says a lot about our employees. Jeff and his people had to go through 399 little tests to prove that we are worthy of this accreditation. He had a team that was led by Laura Brown, and he had Melissa Kanzler, Kyle Hunt, Mark Absher, Chris Crowe, Connie Delagrana, Matt Powell, Joshua Hankins, Anthony Armour, Bobby Phelps, Pam Hurt, and Ryan Johnson. I also want to thank Jeff, obviously, for making this a priority, and I think it speaks to professionalism of our department and Jeff.
And don't forget Operations Section. I told Bobby I didn't mention him too, so thank you for all that you do.
Did I say him? Bobby Phelps.
Yes, sir. All right. Are there any other awards or recognitions? Do we have any comments tonight?
No. No.
Wonderful. All right. The first item is approval of amendments from the regular meeting on May 5, 2015, and the special meeting on May 7, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Is there any discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. We provide an opportunity for public comments, but I don't see any member of the public here today, so we'll go on to the second reading of ordinance BG 2015-13.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedule. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedule G for general classified employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. This is a second reading, so we've had some discussion. Is there any further discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2015-79.
Municipal Order authorizing renewal of bid number 2014-23 for uniforms for the Fire Department from Bluegrass Uniforms and Equipment of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky. So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. We're here tonight to ask you to approve an existing bid from last year to be used this year to allow the Fire Department and other departments that may need the services to purchase uniforms from both Nats and Bluegrass, essentially to use last year's bid. Both companies have assured us they'll keep the price the same, so it's a good deal for us, and we recommend approval.
Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-80.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-37 for City Hall paint project from Stuart Ritchie Painting of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $99,867. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
As the Commission knows and public probably aware, we're making improvements at City Hall. One of those improvements is adding much-needed paint changes and color upgrades. We had three bidders. Stuart Ritchie was the lowest responsible bidder, and we recommend approval.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you explain to the public this is not just painting? What else they'll be doing?
Oh, well, we have a lot of wallpaper here, and we are faced with the issue of, are we going to paint over the wallpaper? In essence, putting wet mat on top of the wallpaper and have it peel off. So we're taking the wallpaper off, but sometimes that damages the underneath surfaces. Some of that drywall or wall material will be fixed and patched. Areas where we can't, there'll be a 1/4 inch new drywall put up to provide a base surface.
Okay.
Jeff can explain this more if I didn't do that wrong.
I just wanted the public to know it was not just painting, that there was more.
No. Oh, no.
Any other discussion?
This is a big place, too.
Sir?
This is a big place.
Oh, yeah. Any other comments? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-81.
Municipal Order accepting donation from John and Linda Kelly Family Charitable Foundation to expand the scope of service of Camp Happy Days. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
I thought it was important to honor John and Linda Kelly. This is the eighth year they've made a contribution for adult camp at Camp Happy Days. We want to thank them and acknowledge them publicly.
We do appreciate their contribution, not only in this, for this particular program, but for all they do with the community and the Autism Foundation as well. But thank you specifically for this. Did you have anything to add, Brent? Any discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-82.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for federal victims of Crime Act grant funds through the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the partial funding of a victim advocate position for the Police Department in the amount up to $41,512. So moved.
Motion by Paragon, second by Hill. Mr. Febo.
This is the 22nd year that the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice Cabinet has made these funds available. Essentially, it helps us to pay about 80% of a crime victim's advocate salary to help those who have been hurt by a crime to adjust to that. So Nick is here, if you have any questions, but it's standard 22 years in a row.
Been around a while. Any further questions? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-83.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of a 2015 grant application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for a fire training system in the amount up to $18,026. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny.
The Firehouse Subs, a private company that makes subs, I guess it was started by two firemen. I care a lot about the communities in which there's fire departments. Since we have a Firehouse Sub here, those cities that have one can be eligible for funding that the owners or founders of the Firehouse Sub have made available. We are here asking your permission to submit requests for $18,026 to buy a training simulator to use both for our public, for a fire extinguisher, as well as for tactical fire planning. Greg is here, if you want to chat about it.
Any comments or discussion? I believe the owner of the Firehouse franchise, or the franchisor is actually a retired firefighter, if I understand correctly.
They have commercial.
Yeah. One of them's bald, one's not, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-84.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of an economic development bond grant for the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development for Quiver Ventures LLC in the amount of $750,000, and approving and authorizing execution of grant agreement. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
I'll try this, but I need some help from Gene. As you all know, we have been involved with Quiver Ventures, the transpart, to make that new initiative work. The Chamber of Commerce got a received grant from Kentucky Cabinet for $750,000 to help this company start up. The money has to pass through a municipality or a public entity. We've been asked to, we're, we're the public entity. Our responsibilities are essentially to receive the money, distribute it, and make sure it's done appropriately. Gene, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's pretty much it. Actually, we have no responsibility for any of the debt. They will provide Jeff with documentation showing they spent the money. Quiver and Jeff will then submit those documentations to the state. The state will approve it, send the money back to Jeff, and then he will send that money back on to Quiver.
Any other comments or discussion? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-85.
Municipal Order authorizing amendment of the Section 457 deferred compensation plan for employees of the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, to allow for a Roth 457 option. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
The city sponsors, through the ICMA and through the state, two deferred comp programs. ICMA has come out with a new product, which is called the Roth 457. In order for our employees to participate in this program, if they choose, we have to amend our plan. Michael and I are recommending that we amend our plan to allow our employees the option of undertaking a Roth 457 option. Mike is here, if you have any questions about the particular.
Any discussion? No additional cost to the city?
No.
Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Excuse me, Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-86. Mr. Febo.
Municipal Order approving job development incentive fund employee withholdings credit agreement and amended and restated payment in lieu of taxes agreement related to the industrial expansion project being undertaken by Bowling Green Metal Forming LLC. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
I'll defer to Jeff, who understands the particulars and manages the particulars of this program.
This is an expansion going on up at Bowling Green Metal Forming. They applied for the KBI incentive through the state. The JDI P committee met and agreed that it would be a good thing, give them 1% for 10 years. These are very good jobs. I think average salary on these is about $50,000 or better. Gene also worked with them on a payment in lieu of tax agreement, which kind of got a little complex, given there's multiple series of bonds that had been issued, industrial revenue bonds. So I guess I'll hand off to Gene to work to explain that.
Okay. Like I said, this is the second major expansion of this facility. It came to fruition 2004, expanded in 2009, doing another expansion again. When it first came in 2004, they were given the industrial revenue bond. In that, the facility is actually conveyed to a different entity, then leased back. Those lease payments, like everything else, are the debt payment. At the end of the day, they get it back. There's always a requirement that all the school taxes be paid, so they've always had to pay one county school taxes from day one. There's always a little bit of option about where they pay city and county. This particular one was negotiated back in 2004. There was no scheduled payments through the term of the bond for the city or county. In 2009, there was not either. This time, there is, beginning in year 15 of this proposal. This is also 20 years, so the first 14 years, they'll continue to pay school, but they will not pay city or county. But in year 15, they will start paying city and county property taxes in full, 100%. At the end of 20 years, of course, it'll be conveyed back to them, and they'll start paying taxes to everybody in full, because the agreement will be over. But this is kind of a dual thing. It's the JDI P, plus it's also the job development incentive stuff and the industrial revenue bond issue as well.
Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. That's the last voting item on the agenda, unless we add something later, but right now we're going to have a budget presentation. Mr. Febo, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to be here today on behalf of the city, presenting the 2015-16 budget. As you know, it's a collaboration involving our employee groups, our department heads, outside agencies, a budget team that you will hear from, and finally, you. By state law, you're required to approve some budget by June 30. In previous years, we're going to adopt the same methodology this year, use a tag-team approach. I'll give you some overview, followed by Jeff, Kate, and Mike. Before they begin, I'd like to outline two broad areas of, I believe, might be of concern to you. One is a summary of the recommendations contained herein in summary form, and second, share with you how we feel that the 2016 budget fits into the city's current fiscal reality. On the first, this budget contains no tax rate increase, no tax increase of any kind. In fact, we have not taken a compensating tax rate, Jeff tells me, since 2007. In fact, have reduced our occupation taxes in the last decade. There's no new debt. In fact, we continue to front-load certain debt, including the ballpark and the ITA. We have started and funded the first year of Brent's reinvestment program in downtown to create a synergy that will help and improve neighborhoods. We have money in here for the big three: paving, stormwater, and sidewalks. What's also significant is that we've increased the money for paving. Over the last six years, we've increased the amount of people received in paving budget from this budget by 60%. We're also continuing our efforts to address road needs in our community. This year's road project is going to be on Small House Road between Highland and Campbell, fixing that whole queuing area there. It's problematic. We're saving a little bit of money for future needs, and we're giving our employees a modest cost of living and recommending a step. By way of how this fits into the overall budget, this is our first budget recommendation since the 2008 recession that wasn't highly reactive to that recession. Although the recession appears to be over, our revenue stream has not returned to what it was pre-recession. Back in the days of 2005, 2004, maybe 2006, we were getting 7%, 8% occupation tax growth a year. We've nestled down into a growth rate of about 2.5% a year on our income. And luckily, we've been able to reduce our overall cost of government to about 2%. So that creates an arbitrage of about 0.5% between cost and revenue, a perfect position. It allows us to provide a fixed budget and do the things that we normally do without raising taxes, cutting services, or, as some people might want to do, or others, agencies do, mask their operating deficit with new debt. We have no new debt in here, so this is a true budget. This balance of revenue to expenses has a limitation, but it allows us to pay the bills, pay our debts, avoid new debt. We'd like, for example, on 707 East Main, we save for five years or so to pay for that without undertaking debt, and that's become our new modus operandi. In here, we have $1 million for what we believe, or more, for what we believe people want in their community, investment. How do we do this? There's no magic pill. We're only growing at, you know, 2.5. How do we decrease our cost profile? There's a number of reasons. You all have told us that you wanted to have a low-cost government, and so we have taken that seriously. It starts with the reduction of personnel. We have fewer people than we had before the recession. We're about down 3%, I think, in our overall census. And that has a cumulative effect. The savings from personnel changes in 2006, 2007 are manifold. They help us avoid personnel costs like health insurance, retirement costs, and salary costs, and all those add to our savings. We also have saved some money and put ourselves in this good position by cutting our costs at department level. One of the mandates for the senior managers and department has behind you is, in their own areas, to look at ways to become more efficient, and I could take you around the field here and explain to each about what departments have made what changes. We also have made significant changes to our risk and health profile. This health program that we have has paid dividends in terms of saving us money. We're going to be realizing a clinic, hopefully, which was designed to save us more money. We've made significant changes to our golf course, saving literally hundreds of thousands in cost. We reduced our cost footprint by essentially making significant changes to what is known as competitive agencies. At one time, we provided close to $400,000 at one time to some different agencies in the community. We have changed that and had a different way of looking at these competitive agencies. We have also, I think, done a pretty good job of reducing our cost of money by refinancing and constantly coming to you. Jeff comes to you with different ideas about how we can save money. In the end, and I think Mike and Katie and Jeff, we'll explain to you how this budget goes together. Before I summate, I think it's important for us to speak to what must be our number-one goal. Given the nature of our occupation tax to job creation, we have to make it a priority to help create jobs. Today, we just had a meeting with the Job Development Incentive Committee. We believe in the coming year, there'll be about 600 new jobs that we'll be incenting. Now, it takes 10 years for each one of those incentives to come fully due, but we need that new money now, and we need a constant refreshing of money coming in. And if we don't make that commitment now and plow that field and plant those seeds, those jobs won't be there 10 years from now. So we need to make that commitment. In closing, how did I do?
Great.
Okay. If I hadn't said it before, forgive me, there is no tax increase in this budget, in no form, way, or how. And there is no debt increase. We believe this budget does what we think our citizens want: a roadmap to live within our means, to deliver the best possible services at the lowest cost, to help create jobs, invest in the place we call home, and just get it done. I'm done. I think Jeff's next. Did I give them three minutes?
Yes, sir. You did great. Thank you. Very succinct.
You did a good job.
Mr. Mizel.
I'll give you a trivia question. What year was the last tax increase?
2004.
2008. Three.
Last property tax rate increase was 2003, as well as the occupational tax when it went to the 2%. So just a little tidbit there.
I was a little off.
Not bad. Let's see. All right. Couple more comments. The last time we issued debt, Joe, was 2008.
I knew it was one of them.
So that was the next question. You were ahead of me on that one.
Yeah.
That was when we did the ballpark and we did Greenwood Fire Station. Just a couple of comments before we get started here. Most of the projections that you're seeing here are based on nine months of what we see now, actual. We only really get to see through March any year before we present to you guys. I just got April numbers yesterday, not time enough to calculate them in, but I think we're okay. It's still about the same. But these are nine-month numbers. We look at the last three months of last year, see how we did there, and kind of extrapolate where we think we're going to end up this year. And then we take that projection, and we make the decision as to whether we think we can sustain that going forward, or if there are any other circumstances that point to like downward trends. A prime example of that is what's going on with liquid fuel tax. We're going to get a little trimming on that going forward, thanks to some changes at the state level, but that's just one example. This is a conservative approach. I don't mind being blamed for being conservative. My wife tells me that I'm so tight that I squeak when I walk, so... But the thing is, with conservative approach, it helps us keep expenditures more in check, and it also creates a margin for error. So, and having a margin of error is a good thing, in my opinion, because it gives you better flexibility. And the buzzword now in the governmental finance world is about being resilient and having resiliency. All these governments that have taken the hits since the recession, and are looking back now at the decisions they made, the new outlook now is how can we be more resilient and be ready for these hard times? And you do that by good budgeting and good financial policies and trimming expenditures when you can. This is an overall view of all funds. We're looking at about a 2.6% increase from FY '15 adopted, going from the $99,255 on revenues to the $101,833.72. The adjusted budget here, this includes a lot of project carryovers from prior years. That's why you see the increase there. You'll have PO, or purchase order, carryovers involved there, along with any budget amendments that we make during the year. Again, all funds, you're looking at all the breakdowns of the categories.[1792.75] This is property taxes, insurance premium tax, across the board, all funds. We're looking at a 3.3 percent increase. Occupational taxes, looking at a 3.5 percent increase on all funds. We'll get to the general fund here in a second. This one, not much change there, about $45,000. That's your, things like your ABC licenses, your building permits, things like that. Intergovernmental is your grants, pretty flat there. That would be your Section 8, your BG Transit, your liquid fuel tax, things of that nature. Your fees here, that actually includes the WKU reimbursement for debt. That's what makes up a bunch of that 3 million, along with code enforcement fees. And then your charges for services, that's your cemetery, your record fees, Section 8 inspection fees, all that kind of thing. And it also includes fleet maintenance charges, where we charge ourselves for fleet maintenance. Parks and Rec, again, includes aquatics and golf for the second year. We are projecting a little bit of a decrease there to adjust to, I guess, reality in a way for the, some of the parks programs had a slight dip this year. We're going to adjust that down going forward this year. And then your miscellaneous is going to include your county sheriff ITA debt that they pay into us, along with health insurance premiums. So that's a big chunk of that 9.5 million. And then all your transfers in here are mostly made up of your debt service, 8.2 million of that is for debt service. That's the million we put in for Small House Road project. We got another 900,000 for the property in casualty fund that we, we find, and things of that nature. So again, there's your 2.6 increase from prior year. This one is just a breakdown. All funds, occupational fees, again, is your big source, 43.7. Taxes make up 16 and a half. Your transfers in, or your movement between funds is another 14.6, and so on. Miscellaneous, 9.4. On the general fund side, you've got about 92 percent of your revenues coming from occupational and property tax. Pretty dependent here, especially on this one. 70 percent of our general fund is about jobs. So we got to keep, either grow or you die. We got to keep pressing that, keep working on it. Can't have enough jobs. And then actually, the property taxes and insurance premium taxes, that's actually gained some ground from the last couple of years. We used to be below 20 percent. I don't know if moving golf and aquatics has kind of diluted this chart down a little bit, but that's actually gone up. And I think the other reason, too, is we're showing good 3 to 4 percent growth in property taxes the last couple of years, too, so that's helped us. Here's the general fund. We're looking at 2.4 increase. And here's what we've seen since '11. We were at 47.6. We're now at 60.3 for FY16. This is about a 26 percent growth over those years. One, two, three, four, five years. So gives you an idea where we've been, where we're going. Another historical chart, going back to '06. Occupational fees in the dark color here, we had a 2 percent rate going along here. FY11, we, we spoke about that being our, kind of our lowest point in revenues, and it was. And then we started our recovery, starting in FY12, with not only occupational, but overall revenues continued to grow. And we're projecting to finish just under 60 million, I think, this year for general fund. Occupational should finish a little above 40, 41. Actually, 41 and a half million, probably, occupationals are better. This is just line by line. Again, property taxes, we're budget, we're budgeting about a 4 percent increase, just under 4 percent. What we did this year, as you remember in your retreat, we moved, we decided to move gas franchise fees to liquid fuel. So you'll see the, kind of the hit there under the other taxes in the general fund. That's kind of a mix between the insurance premium tax projected increase and the hit we're going to show in the liquid fuel tax, or moving the gas franchise over to liquid fuel tax. Occupational taxes, we still separate these. This first line is really the 1.5 percent. We like to keep track of that, how we're doing, because we can look back over history to see what that's really doing, because this line here is really the 0.35 of the 185. This kind of gives you more a true comparison of what all the tax rate increases and decreases have done over time for that line. But we are tracking at about, about 3 percent, I believe, actually more like 2 point, yeah, 2, 3.3 percent, 2.9 on the, the top line. And so we're going to project this in for FY16 at about 3.3 percent growth. Our five-year average for occupational growth is about 3.7. So we're right on that target of between, you know, 3 and a half and 4 percent. Hopefully, that will continue. Next slide here is your license and permits. That's your ABC license, your alarms, your building electric permits, street cuts, showing about a 4.8 percent growth there. And then showing a slight decrease in grants. There's not many grants left that we've got in the general fund. A lot of them are special revenue funds now, but that still has the VOKA, the HIDA, and the Bulletproof Vest grants there. Moving along, charges for services, that's things like cemetery records fees again, fireworks fees, Section 8, all that kind of stuff, showing pretty flat there, slight decrease. And then Parks and Rec, again, we already talked about that. That's, we're adjusting that down slightly on the revenue side. Miscellaneous is going to be your interest, rental income, sell equipment, judgment settlements, donations like that. We're showing pretty much a flat budget there. And then your transfers in, this amount here is actually the Heartland development money coming from the Heartland development area, Parks Development. So overall, it's a breakdown of the, the sources, 2.4 overall. Won't rehash all of this, but it gives you a breakdown. We're showing the adjustments there in the grants and fees and parks and so forth. And with that, I'm going to hand off to Katie to cover expenditures, unless you all want to ask me questions on the revenue side.
Any questions for Mr. Mizel?
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Schaller, thank you.
This is the same slide that Jeff had gone over, but I'm specifically going to talk about the expenditure side of this. If you look, the FY15 adjusted, adjusted expenditures, as Jeff had mentioned, do include purchase orders and carryforwards that we included last year for capital projects. So that number is at about 61 million right now. We project that probably won't end the year at that high. It'll probably be closer to 60 million.
Before you leave that slide and people see the red, the deficit figures, that does not imply that we're spending deficit. That's just using savings from the previous year for those projects that come up in this fiscal year.
Correct. That is correct. For after FY16, we do propose to use just under 1.2 million of previously saved money for the all-funds budget to cover capital projects, and also to cover the increases in the healthcare fund. For the second consecutive year, as Mr. DeFebo had mentioned, we do not expect to use any fund balance in the general fund budget. We're matching revenues to expenditures to operate and cover all capital proposals and personnel changes in this budget. This is, again, a breakdown. This is the all-funds budget, so overall, it's up about 2.9 percent when you are comparing to the previous year. About a million dollars in the increase in contractual services is attributable to the healthcare fund, as I mentioned. We've got anticipated increases in insurance premiums and high claimants. We're also looking at the onsite health center to operate. That's about 100 and some thousand dollars in the next year. And then, of course, we've got the capital projects that we're proposing, which also impacts the about $250,000 increase in fixed assets. That's related to capital. About $176,000 increase in the subsidies is mostly due to the expected increase in TIF money that will be paid out next year. And then, of course, debt service continues a downward trend, as we have done some refinancing in the last few years. If you exclude capital from the all-funds operating budget, we're only up about 1.7 percent compared to the FY15 operating budget. And again, this is just a couple charts to show how the money is divided among the departments. Public safety makes up the largest percentage of each, the all-funds and the general fund, at about 40, about almost 42 percent of the general fund and 28 percent of the all-funds. And of course, the remaining departments cover the rest, about 46 percent, all-funds, and 41 percent in the general fund. And of course, debt and transfers out cover a small amount. As Jeff had mentioned, again, we're matching revenues to expenses this year, so our revenue budget was up 2.4 percent, as is our expenditure budget overall. And since the general fund is nearly 60 percent of the all-funds budget, that's what we tend to focus in on, is the general fund. Coinciding with the projected increase in revenues, as I mentioned, we are going to be operating at less than 2.1 percent, 2.4 percent. The difference in that is going to be our capital budget. So we're covering all of our capital expenditures within the operating revenues that we're And again, similar to the slide that Jeff showed with the occupational fee collection compared to the all-funds, or all revenues collected, we are comparing the personnel expenditures with all of the rest of the expenses in the general fund. Again, personnel makes up 60 percent of this budget, and what we want to see is this slide look very similar to the occupational slide, where your personnel expenses stay within what your occupational fee increases are. That's what we want to gauge personnel expenses by. That's how we know we can afford some of the increases that we propose and that sort of thing. And of course, we have given a COLA and STEP increase, and we've had changes in CRS rates over the past several years, which would impact the personnel figures. But as Mr. DeFebo mentioned in his opening remarks, we have done what we can to right-size this organization. We have reorganized positions. We have changed full-time positions to part-time positions to cut costs where we can. And we've also continued to hold non-public safety positions vacant for a period of time before filling, in order to extract that savings. Just a more specific breakdown of personnel expenditures. You can see just wages alone is about 1.6 percent. That does include our COLA increase, and it includes our STEP increase. We also have our CRS rate changes this year, is the second year that they're proposed to go down, which is helping to offset the increase in our other personnel costs, which include our medical benefits, our dental vision, life insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment costs. And then the other benefits line, that's really just tuition reimbursement and some cell phone stipend reimbursements and some other small certification reimbursements that we provide. I think Michael mentioned later that we did have health insurance premium increases take effect in January, so again, the decrease in the CRS rates is helping to offset that increase in the, the other personnel costs. So overall, we're increasing our personnel by 1.4 percent. In the past two years, we've saved about $250,000 in those CRS rate decreases, so that's been very beneficial to us. Mr. DeFebo also mentioned in his opening remarks that the budget team and the departments continually scrutinize our budgets as we put them together and try to extract as much savings as possible and reduce costs as we prepare these budgets. So when we look at some of these increases, particularly in our contractual line expense, that is specifically related to capital projects, for the most part. But there are a few other small incidental increases that we're proposing, related to changes in software maintenance. We've taken on some new maintenance. Some of the warranties have expired, so we've got some additional costs there. We are adding some additional training for our police officers, and we're also adding some additional advertising money to the HR budget, so that we can expand our scope and reach out to larger cities, trying to expand on our diversification of the employee format that we have. And of course, the capital projects, more specifically, the whiskey-run water, water quality, I can't talk today, sorry. The whiskey-run water quality improvements, the improvements to the Wakefield Prond, and then also the relocation of our 40-year-old cemetery maintenance building make up that 3.4 percent, which is a little over $300,000 increase from the one year to the next. And then we've got some upgrades in the police facility, their security camera system. We've got replacement of a fan coil in this building. We've got the AC unit replacement in IT server room. And then we're also looking at a groundwater monitoring station purchase for next year, which accounts for the about $325,000 increase in our fixed assets. Again, that's all capital project-related. And of course, the supply budget, which really doesn't hold much capital improvement, is basically level, remain flat. Looking at subsidies and assistance, that's about a $320,000 increase from last year to this year. Again, that is related to the TIF distribution that we're projecting for next year. We'll be looking at about a 16 percent increase in that. The small decrease reflected in transfers out, actually, that's part of our debt refinancing that we are proposing. We had about $400,000 more dollars budgeted last year in debt than we have this year. But we've also had some increases in the new radio system fees take effect this next year, as is some increases in our capital project proposal. So the decrease in the debt, yet the increase in the other areas and transfers out, we still come up with a negative decrease in that amount. A couple of things that are included in that transferred out, transfers outline, that's where the general fund-supported capital projects are located. So the money that goes toward the sidewalk improvement program, the stormwater mitigation program, our additional money for the Small House Road Improvement Project, this is the second year, at about $1 million for that project to get it finished out. We've also proposed this year new is a future road project fund, where we start saving for future roads. $700,000 of that 10 million is the initial contribution to that fund. Again, that $700,000 should go for a future road project, so it's not something we budgeted this next year, but we're starting the savings. It's that front-load concept that we've talked about earlier with our debt. And we also have equipment replacements this year, and that are general fund-supported in that account. And one other item that's been proposed is to present a downtown wayfinding system. Hopefully, as the downtown is starting to grow, we're getting more development taking place, we really need what I would call a better way and a more unified approach to the signage that we have out there for pedestrians and motorists as they travel through downtown and try to get to their destinations. I think we've had some complaints, you may have received some yourselves, about, well, how do I know where to go to get to the ballpark, or to get to Circus Square Park? Because they're not well identified, and we don't really have good signage to help direct people. So a wayfinding system is something that we have been looking at. It is something that we've got a committee of staff members working on right now. We have also identified several stakeholders in the community that we hopefully will be able to do a private-public partnership with. And right now, what we're proposing is about $50,000 to go into a capital projects fund for that purpose, and that would be the city's contribution toward that. But we also hope to get our stakeholders to provide some contributions toward the total cost of all of that. It's pretty extensive. I don't know if you've been to Owensboro, but you've probably seen some of the wayfinding that they've put out. And you see them all the time in larger cities. Even Western has their own wayfinding system, where they direct people to various buildings on their campus. They have the big kiosk maps. They also have signage, probably exiting their garage, parking garages, to help people know what direction to go to get to a particular location on campus. So that's sort of the same concept we're looking to do in the downtown area with a Looking at debt service, again, general fund is 43 percent of all debt expenses. It's about $5.5 million. Our special revenue funds, that's our fire improvement fund, and then our job development incentive fund, that cover about $2.6 million in debt. We have one enterprise fund left, that's a convention center, and it covers $760,000 of debt. And then we've got reimbursements, about 31 percent, $4.8 million coming from WKU and Warren County toward our debt expenses. County toward our debt expenses. Again, this is the general fund contributions toward debt. We are looking at 9.2% of our overall general fund expenditures is toward the debt at 5.5 million. And these are all of our previously approved financial obligations and those that are specifically supported by the general fund. And with the exception of the ballpark bonds, all the rest of the debt listed on here will be paid off by 2034. And we, again, continue to look at refinancing these as much as possible, the most recent being the 2007 A series. We did a refinancing here in just this last few months. Our estimated fund balance, again, we're not looking to use any fund balance to cover expenses in the next fiscal year. We do have a 20% of general fund reserve that we try to set aside, and that is based on the amount of revenue that we budget for next year, so it's about $12 million. So we're looking at at least $3.3 million of unassigned fund balance that would be available to use throughout the year, as may be needed for any emergency purchases, emergency repairs, any other significant occurrence that takes place that we feel we need to spend some additional money on. We have that additional money available. We actually look to have more than that, more than 3.3 million in fund balance, unassigned fund balance available at the end of fiscal year '16, probably closer to $4 million, maybe 4.5, depending on how well we are able to run our budgets this next year. Again, this is just sort of an overview of the personnel expenditures by type. Overall, 2.4% increase, but if you take out the capital expenditures and you're only looking at the FY16 operating budget, it's 1.7% increase, which is just over $900,000. Of that $900,000, $766,000 of that, or about 84%, is personnel-specific. That's related to our STEP increase, our COLA increase, some other personnel adjustments that we're proposing. So our actual operating budget's only going up about $250,000 for next year when it comes to non-personnel-related items. And again, these are just a couple charts that show personnel expenses make up the largest piece of the pie when it comes to the all funds and the general fund budget. And that's what I have to talk about, so I would like to invite Human Resources Director Mike Grubbs to come forth, and he was going to review for you the recommendations and our personnel changes, and then he'll do an overview of the capital improvement program for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Schaller. Mr. Grubbs.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, Mr. DeFebo. Always appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you about this portion of the budget, delve into some of the details regarding personnel, and then also the capital budgets, which are two of the big pieces of the budget besides debt and then just general operating expenses. I will kind of go over some of the details on which you've already heard, either from someone else that's already spoken on the budget team. Again, if you've got any questions, feel free to throw them out there. I usually get a question I can't answer, so it's up to you, Joe, to try this time.
I'll come up with some mine.
Of course, what I would do is make recommendations or present the recommendations pertaining to wages, pay classification, and workforce complement. Turn this the right way. This year, we expect the general fund additional cost to be about $766,000. This is less than last year because the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, went up less this year, but we're presenting our recommendations for raises for full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees. We have a couple of recommendations on new positions, a few key upgrades, and, of course, benefits. Just to highlight what happens with the Consumer Price Index, we typically have attempted to follow at least what the Department of Local Government presents. This year, the increase was only 0.8% for calendar year 2014, and you can see how that compares to the previous two years. 2013 is asterisk, and last, previous fiscal year, we gave a 2% raise instead of the 1.5% because there was a year previously with the economic downturn where we weren't able to give the full increase, so we tried to give a little bit more last year. We are recommending a 1% COLA this year rather than the 0.8, simply because it is a relatively small COLA. And what that means is we have pay schedules that all of our employees are covered by. There's a minimum pay rate, a maximum pay rate, and we will adjust those by the 1%. So the new starting rates for jobs will go up by 1% as well. We also have the STEP plan. When it was adopted in 2006, it was a biannual plan where someone would get a STEP increase every two years. We had that for a couple of years, and then with the recession, we had to stop it for two years, and when we came back in 2012, we went with annual half-steps. That helps spread the cost out budgetarily. That works out to about an average 1.25% across the workforce for those that are eligible. Depends on their pay schedule. Someone who's down toward the beginning of their pay grade is going to get a bigger percentage compared to someone who's top, near the top of their pay grade. As an example, for a police officer or firefighter who's been here a year, it's about 1.64%. We expect this to be an impact in the budget of about 1.1%. The reason for that is not everyone gets a merit increase. They have to be eligible, having been in their job for a year, and also have at least satisfactory service. With regard to part-time and seasonal employees, we're recommending the 15 cent an hour increase, which actually is an average of about 1.6%, which is more than the COLA, but as previously discussed last year, there are concerns that the state or the federal government will raise the minimum wage, and we're trying to help prepare ourselves for that since it could impact us significantly if and when that does occur. Just to make sure the public knows that the state regulation also dictates the amount of the increase that the elected officials can receive, and that would be capped at 0.8%. So that's the only amount that the elected officials would be able to receive. We have recommended a handful of changes in our classification system. A pay classification upgrade is when we feel that a position has increased responsibilities. We also look at internal equity as far as, you know, what jobs compare to other jobs in the city, or if we've made changes in the organizational structure or someone has taken on supervisor responsibilities. We have recommended nine upgrades in this budget, none of those are management personnel. Four of them relate to previously discussed reorganization in the Finance Department. The other five are all one-pay grade changes. Three of them are due to internal equity, and two of them were due to increased responsibilities. Then the pie charts showing you all funds for personnel, and general fund, you can get an idea there of the public and get an idea of how our funds are spent in terms of the general fund. 62.5% of the general fund personnel costs go to police and fire, and the parks and recreation is 14.2%, 0.2%. Public Works, 8.1%. General Government, which is our administrative department, is 11%, and then NCS is 4%. As Katie mentioned, good news from the retirement system, the third consecutive year that rates went down. Our rates are dropping this next fiscal year, 3.5% for our non-hazardous or general employees, and about 4% for hazardous duty. We provided you with some examples showing how high it was, you know, three fiscal years ago, and then you compare that to 2005, when hazardous duty retirement was 22%. Now we're at 33, and that's after some years have dropped. And, of course, the General Assembly did make changes that became effect in 2014 that helped with pension costs, but it also has impacted the type of retirement plan that our new employees are going to have in the future. Our medical plan, we did make changes back in 2009 that have helped stabilize the costs for several years. We actually went four years without an increase in our overall costs. 2013, we did have a spike. 2014, fortunately, we leveled off a little bit, and these are our total costs for health, dental, and vision. We are expecting our costs up at this fiscal year that we're ending. However, they are within the budget that we adopted. We do have some high claimants, and also because of the Affordable Care Act, everyone is seeing probably some changes. Where we're getting hit is obviously if you've got a high claimant. It used to be, in the old days, plans could have a lifetime maximum, and typically those individuals that went on some type of other government program other than the City of Bolingrave's medical plan, those lifetime maximums are now gone, and we have those costs here on out. So if you've got a claimant with a half a million dollars' worth of claims, that goes on as long as that claimant has those medical issues. Again, we did budget this year, this coming year, a 16% increase. We don't have the final reinsurance or stop-loss rates in. We wait till as far into the end of the fiscal year as we can, but we did project an increase to be on the safe side. As Katie mentioned, we did, for the first time since 2009, implement a premium increase in January. It was pretty moderate comparatively, but we will obviously have to monitor that year after year. And as mentioned, our next major step in trying to control health costs is by implementing an employee onsite health center, and we'll be coming to you probably at our next meeting with a recommendation on that. We do have a trust fund that's been developed over years, and as of the end of last fiscal year, we had $3.8 million in that fund. If we made no further contributions from the general fund, that would cover our medical expenses for seven months. So again, we've saved money over time to help cover the bad years. Overall, our workforce, as the city manager mentioned, we have reduced it over time. If you compare back to 2008, eight years ago, the total number of bodies is down 3.5%. Full-time is down 3%. If you look at this, it looks like, oh, they've cut people in police and fire, which is the darker color, over time, but those are civilian positions that have actually moved to other departments. The two animal control wardens moved to code enforcement and NCS. We had a crime analyst, we moved to GIS and Public Works, and the fire mechanic moved to fleet and Public Works. The number of sworn firefighters, police officers has not changed. We are recommending two additional positions in this budget. Obviously, departments make requests that we're not able to fund or we have to prioritize, but one of the recommendations is to add another supervisor in the 911 center. They obviously operate 24/7. We do not have supervision all the time, so we are recommending one additional position there. Then also a part-time fire code inspector to help us particularly with inspections in what used to be single-family homes but are converted to multifamily or student housing near the university, to help us increase the number of inspections that we're doing each year. As mentioned, we continue to review positions. We won't have an increase in the number of full-time positions if this budget's adopted because we changed a full-time equipment mechanic at the cemetery division to a part-time labor during this year when the position became vacant. Anyone studying the number of employees in detail might say, well, your number of part-time employees has gone up, but that's because parks have split some positions. They've said, okay, we don't need this person here all these hours, but we could really use someone over here. They'll take one position, split it, and use them in different areas. So the number of hours isn't much different, but the number of bodies might be different. And again, we are down in our full-time complement. Just to review, recommending a 1% COLA for all full-time employees, an average STEP increase of 1.25% for those who are eligible. That's an average budgetary impact of about 2.1%. Again, 15 cent an hour increase or 1.6% for part-time seasonal. They're also eligible for a STEP increase of 10 cents if they've been here at least a year and performing satisfactorily. No rate increase, rate relief on CRS, not making any significant changes to our benefits other than monitoring the health fund and seeing if we have to recommend any premium changes in the future. And again, just a few key changes in our classification of positions, but the number of full-time employees staying the same. Any questions on the personnel side?
A part-time person, time does not stop. In other words, if they work part-time this year, they start next year just like they've been there all year.
Well, what we do, since we do have a lot of seasonal employees, and we've actually taken a number of positions that were year-round and made them seasonal, like crossing guards or maintenance people at the golf courses, if they come back the next season, we will give them their STEP increase. If they worked here anytime during fiscal year '15, then they would get a STEP increase in '16, or '14 they would get in '15, because it's not their fault that we laid them off. But they had to have worked here the previous year in order to be eligible for that 10 Move on into the capital budget. This is a little bit of a historical comparison. 2007 kind of shows you our last really good year, back when we had the full tax increase and the economy was going well. We had a CIP of over $33 million. Debt was less than $9 million. General Fund had a capital budget of over $6 million, and debt was 27% of our capital budget. 2010 kind of represents the worst year after the recession, plus the tax cut. The CIP was half that much, debt was up. We had no money in the budget that year from the general fund for capital, and debt was now 80% of the capital budget, which meant, obviously, that year we did very little capital. Then you have the comparison of the last four years plus the recommendation. Things obviously improving. Our capital budget's gone up, debts evened out, general fund has gone back up to over $3.5 million, and we've settled in it, debt being about 61% of the capital budget, and then obviously, projects themselves being the remainder of it. We've tried to break down the projects into kind of the four major strategic goals that the city has, one being traffic and roads or traffic flow, which is almost $2.4 million or 29%. Facilities and equipment, $2.9 million, which is 34%. Community livability, $2.1 million, which is 25%. And then technology improvements, just a little over a million, which is 12.2%. Now, I'm prepared to go through every single one of these projects in great detail for you, but what I'll do is just kind of highlight them, and if there's one you want additional information on, just shout out. All of this information is in your budget binders, and it will be available for the public, providing some detail on each one, so, but we, some have already been mentioned, but we'll highlight, make some highlights. Obviously, sidewalks, a half a million dollars in our budget this year, $400,000 for new and $100,000 for continuing. We initiated the sidewalk project in 2008, and so far, we have either constructed or have pending 12.5 miles of sidewalks. And that $400,000 is local tax money. That's coming out of the general fund revenues. Stormwater mitigation, $870,000. $500,000 of that is our ongoing stormwater program. When we had the flooding in May 2010, we started that program, and we have allocated over $2.5 million of local tax money to this project since then. The Wakefield Pond drainage project might run $70,000, but we budgeted $220,000 if we have to do underground piping and put in some valves. And then, of course, Whiskey Run is our largest, oldest storm sewer system in downtown area and needs a lot of work. Parks and Recreation, we've allocated $220,000. We're going to do some additional work on the new park on the west end. We're going to replace Shelter One at Lampkin Park, plus put in some new playground equipment. And we need to relocate the batting cages at Pettigale Park because they're going to move back the fences. Older people play there, and it's too easy to hit a home run. Already discussed, the reinvestment of area, over half a million dollars, and this is being added to the half a million dollars that was budgeted this past year, so a lot of work can be done in the area generally west of, west of the bypass to make improvements, streets, parks, sidewalks, housing improvements, demolition. The next major area, traffic flow, again, $2.4 million in the budget dedicated toward that. As the city manager mentioned, we've increased the funding for street resurfacing to $1.3 million. $200,000 of that of the city funds is the gas franchise fees that the city commission previously discussed allocating for street resurfacing. We expect to do about 7.5 miles of streets this year, again, depending on asphalt costs and the conditions of the roadway. As Katie mentioned, Small House Road improvements, we budgeted the same amount for this this past year, or the, excuse me, city manager mentioned. We plan to widen Small House Road from Highland Way to Campbell Lane to help take care of congestion there. Moving on to technology improvements, a million dollars for that. We'll be able to replace all of our PCs that are five-year We'll be able to replace all of our PCs that are five years old and then the monitors as needed. Our document management system was purchased in 1998. We'll replace five servers. We're probably going to replace 12 over three years. And then, in order to be proactive in trying to prevent hacking into the city's computer system to do some intrusion prevention work. Continuing in technology, police incar cameras will be the second of the third year in purchasing about 20 cameras. Our tasers are about eight years old and really need to be placed after five, so the second year of replacing them. Fire department, with NFPA standards, it's very difficult now to use an actual vehicle and set fire to it to train a firefighter on how to put out the fires. We have about 40 a year, so they'd like to buy an actual simulator where they can practice putting out fires. And then sadly, we need to purchase a lot of cameras and recording equipment for our parks for security purposes, vandalism, theft, that sort of thing, so we're going to start the first of a four-year plan there. And then again, equipment replacement, replace 15 patrol cars and a crime scene van, various trucks in public works, including a specialized sign truck to help employees replace signs that are very difficult to get to. And then in parks, three trucks, a dump truck, and replace the old school bus with the school bus that's not quite as old. Fire department has a couple of vehicles to replace. We want them to be able to tow trailers, such as the new mobile education trailer they're purchasing. And then NCS has a couple of vehicles, including an animal control vehicle. Other facilities and equipment, Katie mentioned the fan coil unit here in the building, various equipment replacements at the convention center. Air conditioning in the IT server room needs to be upgraded and replaced, put a new crane and hoist at fleet, camera system at police. Going forward, we have a pump station there for golf in order for water to transmit to crosswinds, but because of how the river has shifted course over the years and in droughts, water can't get to that pump, and we have to purchase at cost from BGMU, so we want to put another pump out in the river and only use it when we need it. And then aquatics, making some improvements there because the acid in the pump room can affect equipments. We want to move it to another location. Facility improvements, major lobby renovation at the Slum Convention Center, relocating the cemetery maintenance shop, which is 40 years old and in bad condition, some work at police headquarters, the onsite health clinic, this is the actual onsite construction cost, and then also to do some work to help spruce up the fleet facility. As Katie mentioned, we're not proposing to use any fund balance to pay for this capital equipment. It's all coming from new revenues. You can see, two and three years ago, what we took from fund balance. Again, no new debt. Just a little, I guess, kudos to everybody. We used to moan about how we haven't been replacing equipment, everything's going to fall apart, we've got to do something. Well, this is a consecutive year that the city is recommending putting some money into replacing equipment, particularly in public works and parks. Lot of numbers here, but over a three-year period, we only budgeted a quarter million dollars for all vehicle equipment replacement during the recession, excluding fire trucks. From FY '09 to '14, six years, we spent a half a million dollars on public works and parks. This year, we're ending, and next year, we're proposing to do almost that much each year. So definitely things are improving, and we have to maintain our equipment, otherwise it's going to cost us even more in the long run. Again, just overall, we continue to work on our priority community impact issues like sidewalks, streets, and stormwater. We're budgeting for some vital equipment replacement, facility improvements, and again, as Katie mentioned, we're starting to put aside money for a future road project. Any questions?
Questions from Mr. Groves? Thank you.
I will turn it back to Katie. She is going to cover agency allocations.
One of the last components of our expenditure budget is the money that we put forth for agency funding. As Mr. DeFebo mentioned, we have, through the years, tried to reduce the dependency of agencies on the city, and we've been fortunate to be able to do that and kind of stabilize since 2013. The amount of money provided is about $1.25 million. We are proposing a few recommended changes in next year's funding, and you can see those here. Agencies have an opportunity each year to submit a budget request form. This year, there was about $28,815 in addition to last year's funding that they've requested. We are proposing to increase three agencies up to 3%, those being the Humane Society for Operation of the Animal Shelter, our public transit system, and then also the Human Rights Commission. Operation Pride is also proposed to get an increase that coincides with them taking over the mowing of the Louisville Road corridor from Porter Pike to the 31W bypass. That is something that Warren County had done in the last two years, and the city had participated in about $9,000 for the city's share of that contract. But this year, Operation Pride will be taking that over in January, and it's about $4,500 increase to their budget for that. And then also, the planning commission has done some reorganization, and they're actually requesting less funding and going into FY '16. So overall, it's about a 1% increase over last year adopted budget. One other point to make with the welfare center, they also have an opportunity to receive additional funds throughout the year, which are related to our collections and the gas franchise fee. Any money that we get over $200,000 in gas franchise money goes to the welfare center. That's something that the board approved in 2008, and each year, it's reviewed and considered, and this year, they're going to get about $20,200 more from that gas franchise. Last year, they got about $15,000 in additional funding to go toward their agency allocation. And again, like I said, $20,200 this year. There are a couple other items within the agency funding budget that amount to about $26,000, the largest of that being the city's dollar-for-dollar contribution to the United Way funding, and it is based on what an employee pledges at the beginning of the calendar year for 2015, and then the city had agreed several years ago to match that amount. And so $16,120 is there. We're also proposing $10,000 to go into the emergency management system to help update and expand the emergency warning system that we have. Last year, we didn't actually propose any funding for them, so this is in addition back into the budget, which we've done probably over the last seven years or so. We've been providing them with a little money here and there. Again, they've been using that to expand the system, do some upgrades, and they'd like to get a grant, and so the city would help provide a match for that grant this next year, about $10,000.
I just want to add that all that cows' money is used for our city residents.
It's all within the city limits. One other item, normally, we would provide funding in our budget for the airport related to grant matches, where they go and get federal funding, and the city has a requirement to contribute about 1.25% of the grant match related to the FAA grants they receive. They currently have $50,000 in our standing budget, so we're just going to propose to carry that money forward, so it's still available for them to have access to, but we just didn't see a need in budgeting new money for that same purpose. So there isn't any additional money proposed for them. All in all, agency funding represents about 2.1% of the budget. It is slightly less this year than last. It was 2.3%, but again, we're averaging around more than 2% of the budget. That concludes the discussion that the budget team has to present at this point. I would like to give special thanks to Laura Harris for development of our graphics this year, for our budget presentation document, as well as our budget binder summary book. And then I'd also like to extend a special thank you to Sean Weeks. Aaron Blue used to help me quite a bit with the budget process. This year, Sean got to dive into it, and I would like to thank him for all of his efforts in helping me finish the budget summary document this year. Are there any questions?
Just one.
Yes.
The airport, the 1.25 that we would normally come up with as our part, are you saying if they have a grant, they're going to take their 1.25 out of their $50,000?
Yes. Usually, it's not a lot. The city's portion of the match is 1.25%. It's anywhere between a couple thousand dollars to, you know, $10,000 for any one project. They've got several projects in the works. I believe the expansion or updates to the runway, some additional facility upgrades that they're looking at, and hopefully the future of getting a commercial airline in there, they've got some upgrades to make. So they are proposing to have some capital projects in the next year, but they haven't currently spent any of the money that we've set aside the last couple of years, because those grants just haven't come in yet or they haven't completed them and haven't needed the money yet. I understand they are going to be finishing up a couple of projects here shortly, and they'll be coming for a request of that funding. Usually, it's not more than just a few thousand dollars at a time, but in this case, since we already had that $50,000 set aside, we just didn't really see a need to budget more. But if we need more, we can certainly come up with it later in the year through some savings in some other areas.
I have a question related to the agency funding. I noticed in our presentation, we're giving our city employees 1% COLA. And in the request from at least one of the agencies, the outside agencies, while I'll agree, they all provide necessary services and needed services for the citizens of our community, but one of those agencies is proposing to give a 5% COLA to their employees. Was that taken into consideration in approving or including their entire request?
To some degree, it was. We're specifically talking about public transit, and the city's contribution to public transit is primarily to help get the federal grant funding, so we can help reach and get more of that federal grant funding. So part of the increase for them was related to that. We certainly take their application into consideration, but it is not a COLA increase that we specifically looked at for that funding. If the board would like to change their amount, you're certainly welcome to make that recommendation.
I think we've had this discussion in years past, is there's so many pots of money coming in, it's how you decide, well, did that money go towards that, or did that money go towards that? And so this is like deja vu to me, but I think...
We also took...
Before...
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Go ahead.
We also took the point of view that we're looking at the macro view. Are we increasing the level of funding at our detriment as a city organization? Generally, not. We didn't want to get into the micro-management or micro-decision level. We felt that wasn't necessarily a role, at least under the rules of engagement we have now for us to look at, but if you want that to be a rule of engagement, Kate will certainly be happy to make that applicable.
Well, I personally feel that any agency that is coming to the city and requesting tax money, taxpayers' money, that they operate their agency as efficiently as we try to operate the city. And I would have...
We'll defer to you with all you want to do.
I'm in that same boat. I generally, if I'm on the board of an agency, I make that same comment, that if the city, you know, the largest public-funded local organization is limiting themselves to 1%, then I think that's certainly reasonable.
We don't have to fund them any increase if you all don't want to. I mean, you guys control the money. We took almost a mid-level road.
Right? What's our overall increase to the contract agencies? 2% overall?
1%.
1%. So we thought we were doing good. We, you know, that's consistent with our budget. We didn't dwell into the operating budgets, because that begs the question, if we start dwelling into their budget, we might as well manage it. Right?
Well, there's a point to that, but there's also a point that our guys are getting 1%.
Whatever you all want to do.
I certainly don't want to run these agencies or to micromanage them at all, but I think that if they're coming to the city and asking for funds that ultimately come out of the pockets of our taxpayers, that they should spend those funds, whether they come from us or a grant, in the most efficient way possible. And I just have a personal problem with an agency telling me that they're going to give 5% COLAs to their employees when the cost of living was increased last year was what it was.
Help us out. We'll do what you all want us to do.
I think that's something we need to look at.
Can we look at it as...
Do you want to propose a change to the budget recommendation at this point?
Or you want to think on it and come up with something?
No, I'm not prepared to make the recommendation at this point, but I will look at it.
Okay. What we will do, the agency funding, actual approval for their final dollars comes in a separate municipal order from the budget ordinance. So at that point, that's usually at our second meeting in June, you can make a determination at that point, the actual and final dollar amount provided to each of those agencies. So you don't specifically have to make any changes in the budget itself, but what we would only provide them is the amount approved within the municipal order for the agency funding. So again, that would be presented to you at the second meeting in June, so you've got about a month to determine if you want to make any changes to those specific amounts. It doesn't have to affect the bottom line of the budget. Again, if you choose not to fund as much as recommended, we simply would just capture that difference in underspending and could use it towards something else throughout the year, or just set it aside for addition to the fund balance next year. So again, you don't have to make a decision today, but if you had an idea of wanting to use that money for something else, then I would say it would be helpful to know that now. But again, you don't have to make that determination today, and we can keep the bottom line the same.
This is the same agency that where the question came up Jeff talking about a few years ago pertaining to their cost of living increase and so on.
I know there was some discussion last year, of course, about agencies providing bonuses. We did make that clarification, and I changed the application this year for them to identify if they provide that or not. The board had a concern with that last year. We even updated the agency appropriation agreements to make sure that it was perfectly clear that any funding provided through the City of Bowling Green is not to be used for a bonus. So again, we can certainly address those things as we move forward, and we can change the agency appropriation agreement if you deem necessary to also restrict a COLA amount. But again, that's truly up to how you want to handle that moving forward.
On this same agency, last year, we had appropriated $80,000 for them to improve their services.
Yes.
Of course, we have about a month and a half left for that to be spent, and I believe there was kind of... Go ahead, do you know something?
Well, what I was going to suggest is that money will still be there, we'll carry it forward into next fiscal year, so if in the next month and a half, no determination is made how you want that money to be presented, we simply have not paid it out yet, we'll just carry it forward, and then we can look at it next year to use.
I know that's one of our weaknesses, is transportation, but I don't want them to rush to spend this money.
Right.
I want to get the most for our money. And I think with their change in executive director...
I think the ball's in their court. We met with them, and they were supposed to come back to us based on our conversation with something that was palatable to all the commission, and we didn't hear it at that meeting, so...
But if we could ask them again and see what they're looking at. But so that money, so I understand correctly, that money will still be there for them?
Yes, it will still be there for them. It was specifically designated for them in an agreement approval that we had with the board last year on a municipal order for agency funding, but because there hasn't been any final determination how you want that spent, we haven't appropriated that out yet. So we still have it. We'll just simply carry it forward until we're ready to make that payout.
Or you could take it out.
Yeah, you could do that, too. Any other questions about this budget?
We've got a couple. The Wakefield Pond, I know, is on our capital improvement program, and I think we've discussed that before. I hope we don't wait till after July to go ahead and do the bid process and so forth. I'd like to see that project move a little forward, because I'm already starting to get mosquito phone calls.
I believe, and Jeff can correct me, but I believe they are looking to do the work in July, so once they knew this project was going to get funded through this budget, they were going to start to move on that. Is that correct, Jeff?
Jeff and I met on it today, in fact, and based on your concern, and we understand it's a fast go, so...
You don't even have to wait till July for me. You don't even have to wait to July for me.
Well, that's when the money will get appropriated. But they're going to go out to bid early, before the end of this fiscal year, so that we can be ready to start July 1.
I'm just, we all should be very proud that we're doing this.
Oh, it's a great budget.
I mean, it's something that's been.
Great presentation.
I remember Joe taking me over here, remember back in 206, you and I drove over that one time?
Remember it well.
I mean, it's been decades.
A lot of dead ducks between then and now, probably.
My understanding is there was a really optimal time of the year to do the work, and I think July was that timeframe, so we're going to move on.
Hopefully, dry it and not smell quite so bad for as long. The only other thing I had was the additional personnel on the part-time fire inspector. In thinking about that and how it relates to all of what we do with regard to building and building safety, I'd like to propose that that be set aside for this time, and all of our agencies that are involved in review or inspection. It seemed like a perfect time, since we have a new building manager at Neighborhood and Community Services. Maybe they could look at all of what we do, whether it's our partners at Planning and Zoning and Public Works and code enforcement and building review and fire inspection and all of that, and maybe come up with a global plan of how best to use those personnel. I hate just to add another person in another silo, and everybody does their own separate things, when there may be some way to coordinate that. I know there's some special provisions and so forth, but.
Greg wrote a thoughtful memo.
He did, there's an excellent memo.
You know, from a staff point of view, Mike and I and Greg, we feel that this position is needed. If you're asking us to put it in abeyance, because the money isn't significant, we have the money. If we want to put it in abeyance to do the study, we're okay with that.
I would appreciate that maybe come back and.
You want to put it in abeyance before we fill it until you guys have a chance to look at it globally. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Maybe at Fall Retreat, we can take a look and see.
You're not taking it out of the budget, you're just putting it in abeyance.
You're working me real well. I appreciate it.
Is that right?
I understand what you're doing.
Okay. It's called compromise, right? I think.
The amount in the budget is less than $20,000.
We can always add it back, take it out now and add it back in, because we do budget amendments all the time, don't we, Jeff?
Well, it's less than $20,000. I think it's like $18,442. I mean, it's really not a significant amount.
I understand that.
We can take it out.
When you add people, then it seems it's like a program, and it never goes away. So that's not true. We've done, we've done an excellent job. You have over the recession, and I don't think, even though our revenue has been down through that time period, you know, I came on, when I came back on the commission in 2007, when we were doing really well, and then the bottom dropped out, and we've struggled to get through that, and I think that, for the most part, I haven't heard much from the public that they've noticed any kind of change in service provision in that time. So I really appreciate the work that you all have done in getting us back to this program.
What the commission don't see with some of these job recommendations, there's probably a handful of others that we didn't bring to, that we didn't, staff.
Thank you.
Staff leaders, we didn't feel comfortable. This is one we felt had merit, and I think it will still have merit, but if you want to do the study of the global thing, I don't have a problem with that.
If I could ask, when we have position upgrades suggested.
Yes.
If I could see the education requirements for those, I think that would be beneficial.
Where's Mike?
If there is an education requirement.
Mike, you want to address that? I don't know.
No one in that?
No, just one.
Oh, in the future.
Yes, and on these that you present us, I would like to see that, but from now on.
We sent a background memo.
Right, yes.
And we can add that in there if that would be helpful. Without names, of course.
Yes, no names, just what's required. Is there, you know, for example, is it just high school? Is it a college? Is it a master's?
Experience?
Yes.
Certifications, maybe?
Yes.
Generally, we eliminated masters, even though a number of us have them, we didn't think that you needed to have a master's to do the work in the city. But we think some jobs need a college degree. But yes, we can, we can do that.
So at this, I'm sorry, somebody started talking.
I was just asking for any other comments or questions, so I'd be happy to entertain it.
Okay. Well, at this point, what we would do is present to you at the first meeting in June, a budget ordinance for first reading. My understanding is we're still going to present to you a balanced budget for the general fund, but certainly, we can hold off on a few things as we move forward, and you'll have a chance to also approve the agency funding separately at the second meeting in June. The second reading of the budget ordinance would be at the second meeting in June, and of course, we'd have personnel classification updates as well to come forth at the first meeting in June. So June is really our budget month, so you'll have a lot of activity and items to consider for that. Are there any other changes or proposals or anything that we want to make or suggest at this point?
The three important things that the public needs to take away is no tax increase, no new debt, and no reduction in services.
That's correct.
And some new sidewalks.
That's color. What's that in horse racing? Triple crown? There you go.
Trifecta.
Trifecta.
Could we get a copy, mayor?
Sir.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Sometime within the next few weeks, can we get a copy, and we may have already gotten, of the streets to be paved in the city of Bowling Green?
We're going to, we've been working with a particular neighborhood, and we're going to have a presentation on not only the streets that are going to be paved, but how those are selected, so that people can understand it's not the squeaky wheel, it's the roads that need to be paved.
I'm sure you're getting some complaints about people who say, why not me? So at the, I think, June meeting, the second meeting in June or first meeting in June, we're going to do a show and tell what science Jeff uses to pick the road, plus, we can give you an update of the roads again, and that would be helpful.
And I know, I for one, would love to see those, those people who want to know why their street is or is not included. We want to encourage them to come to this meeting.
We were going to use social media to advertise that intent, plus, the people who have called you, probably, you can call them personally if you'd like.
Yeah, because a lot of people get confused, you know, their street hadn't been paved in all six, seven years. By hell, we've got some streets that haven't been paved in 15 years, maybe longer.
Yeah, I live on a quiet street. I don't expect it to be paved for 60 years, because it's not a high-traffic street, there's not a lot of fall and freezing here, you know, it's not ice, I mean, ice denigration that you have up north of some street, that rule doesn't apply generally, just the time. And some people confuse, maybe, I can understand it, but the physical look, the appeal of a street, the physical appeal of a street, its beauty versus its functionality and utility.
Once the shine goes off of a street, people think that it's time for something else to be done to it again, you know?
Yeah.
And as long as the rideability is, is good, you know, shouldn't have any complaint, because some people have streets where the rideability is not good.
I do a pretty good job of, if you can see, we increased our level of funding for paving. We understand that's an important priority. Maybe next year, if it becomes a bigger issue, we can take money from some of the other top three and put more money into paving here, if that would be helpful, like take it from sidewalks for a couple of years and put more into paving.
Glad you brought that up, so we could at least get that word out there, to expect the meeting, whenever it's going to be.
What would you prefer? June 2nd meeting is already compared to some other fairly large things. The second meeting in June would give us more time to thoughtfully analyze this. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, and Kim will be back by then.
Okay. And the other thing being brought up this evening, thank you for tuning in. Our next scheduled meeting is June 2nd, 2015. We want to wish everyone a safe Memorial Day, and congratulations to whom ever won the elections today.
That's right.